Are we on many? Now being 6:00 PM, we'll call the Castle Hills Special City Council Meeting to order and determine whether a quorum is present. A quorum is present. Is there anybody who would like to give the invocation tonight? Laverne, I've been missing you for the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you, would you give us the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Laverne is a longtime resident here, and I appreciate that.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next thing I would ask is somebody out in Cyberland, please ping me to let me know that we are recording live and that everyone, at least who pings me, is tied into the Internet. Acknowledgements and presentations. There is none. Citizens to be heard. There is none. So, there is a consent agenda on the item, on the agenda this time, and it's considered by, it's item one, which is considered by minute entry, to host the first annual citywide garage sale and set a date. That is on a consent agenda, so unless someone pulls it, we will go, is anybody pulling it? Okay. Let's have a motion for it, please. We, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Mayor, we need to set a date.
Okay.
That's open-ended on this.
Okay. It's on the consent agenda. Hang on, hang on. So, we do pull it to set a date. So, go ahead, Amy. Sorry, ladies and gentlemen.
So, the idea was brought up on Nextdoor about having a neighborhood garage sale. This is something that a lot of property owners' associations in other cities do. Seeing as how recently we had a former, a former mayor, Marcy Harper, that passed away, and she had a love for animals, it seemed like this would be a good opportunity to honor her by having a garage sale day where we are donating the permit fee of $10 to the Castle Hills Animal Shelter. The permit fee will be reduced to $10. The garage sale participation will not count towards anyone's limit for the two garage sales you may have per year, and I would suggest that we do this sooner than later, and so my suggestion would be the weekend of Friday, May 18th through Sunday, May 20th. That, that avoids Election Day, and the next weekend is Mother's Day, and the final weekend in May is Memorial Day. So, that would be my recommendation.
Just so, just so the public knows, we do know what we're doing up here. When you have a consent agenda and no one pulls it out, basically it moves forward. So, we did pull it out. We are going to change some rules of order, so we need to vote on this. And Douglas, did you have anything to say about this?
It's awfully short notice to make it on the 18th. I think if you want to have wide anticipation, the first weekend in June might be a better time.
Okay. Counsel, I'd ask you to take Mr. Gregory's. I will not be in town June the 1st, but that's okay. Nobody needs me. Frank?
I agree that it's a short-term situation. June, whatever might be good, July.
Okay. Okay. Ms. McGlynn.
No other comments besides the May suggestion.
Okay. I suggest that we go ahead and try to do a date now rather than have to come back and do it. Ms. Scott?
Actually, with the gentleman, I think giving a little more notice would be better because I know if I'm going to go through my garage and clean it out, I'd rather have maybe a few more weeks to do so. I have no problem with the first weekend in June.
Do you have a date in mind?
June 1st through June 3rd. That would be Friday, June 1st through Sunday, June 3rd.
Okay. Through?
Sunday, June 3rd, and...
You mean for the garage sale?
For the garage sale.
Okay.
Yeah. Moving it to June, giving a few more weeks for people to prepare and get ready, get their items ready for sale, that sort of thing, come by and get their permit. And I also want to say I have a special place in my heart for Marcy Harper. She sold me my house here in Castle Hills, and I know her, and I can't imagine any better way to honor her than to collect funds for the animal shelter, which was so close to her heart. So, I'm very pleased that, that this is going to happen.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. Trevino, do you have any comments or question for the item on table, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I would agree with everybody else regarding the later date. In talking with some residents about this, I kind of envisioned it like the Castle Hills Night Out, where we could provide a map and have participating people, their addresses listed, so that if somebody comes in, they can go to the website and see where the people are that are going to be participating. I realize that might take a little more time, so it might be something that we do later, maybe July, August. I don't know how long that would take to coordinate. I'm not saying that we should invest a lot of time into it, but just gathering addresses for people that want to participate and posting a page on the website, showing that.
Mr. Paul?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to mention, whatever we decide on, who's going to plan the structure, the process? Because City Hall, we got to have times, and we got to have all that kind of stuff, and that's not us.
So, there's really no structure to it. The way these usually happen is the sponsoring organization provides some kind of advertisement or a map that has all the addresses. As people come and get their permit for $10, their address can be put on a list, and anyone who's interested in knowing where the sales are can get, get that. Sometimes neighborhoods or cities will have signs. Whether or not we have that is, is not a particular big deal. I think moving it past that first weekend in June to July or August, it gets hot and people are on vacation, and I feel like this is something that should happen sooner. And I'm not opposed to the June 1st through 3rd date.
Okay. Douglas, you okay with all that? Or some of that?
Fine with the dates. Are we going to have a time?
Thank you.
No, are we going to have a time? Is it going to be from 7:00 in the morning, 8:00 in the morning, 9:00 in the morning?
The time's on the permit. We already have, the ordinance is already set up when you can have garage sales, so that's already set for...
When you pull your garage sale permit, it tells you the times that you can open and the times you have to be closed by on the permit itself.
Oh, we're sort of deciding if it's a day, and that's, so do I hear a, a...
Do we need another motion for the new...
Yeah, a motion to go ahead and let's set the date, so we don't get much further into this.
Okay, I'll, I'll motion again for the new incentive gen item with the dates of June, Friday, June 1st through Sunday, June 3rd.
And I'll second.
Okay. We have the 1st through the 3rd on the calendar. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, counsel. We have a garage sale. Thank you, Amy, for bringing that forward. As you know how I feel about Ms. Harper. I think it's fantastic. I think it ought to be an annual event, but we'll go into that later. Okay, new business on two. Consider and act upon an ordinance number 2018-0430-a amending the City of Castle Hills Code Ordinances, Sections 1 through 17, general penalties by adding a provision requiring a mandatory court appearance for second-time violators of certain types of criminal ordinances. This evening, we are very entitled to have the city manager explain this first, and then we'll have any questions after that.
Thank you, Mayor. In consultation with our outside attorney and our judge, and our code officer and our police chief, we talked about a number of cases where there might be a situation where someone repeatedly, in a sense, goes through a process of a court case where they pay it, and in that case, it instantly starts over from that. The clock starts ticking again. So, we met to game plan how we can tweak this ordinance to ensure that we can move forward with the repeat offenders in this process, that the judge is blessed and Mr. Henry, our outside attorney, had crafted the ordinance, and this also helps Louie as well from the code enforcement side of it. Gets us through the judicial process a lot better.
Thank you, sir. Let's go ahead and get into the motion and the second on the table, and then we'll move forward. Do we have a motion for this item, please?
So moved.
Second. Frank, did you second?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right. Let's, let's dig into this a little bit. JR, did you want to start?
Sure, thank you, sir. So, if I understood this correctly, Mr. Rappley and Mr. Brennan, this will just basically give Louie another tool in his toolbox to actually make some progress on some of the issues that we're having in the city. Is that correct?
That's right. These cases are among the most intractable cases that there are. They seem to go on for years, and this hopefully is going to bring faster conclusions to those cases.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Ms. Scott, did you have any comments, please?
I wanted to thank our city manager and our attorneys for looking and putting this together, and it's very clear. I went through and double-checked exactly what chapters fall under this, and they're all very much to do with health and safety of our citizenry, and so I think it's, it's very well done. I mean, if you're convicted of this and it comes up again within 24 months, you get to see the judge, and I think that is a, that's a positive thing. Particularly, I'll just name so people know what exactly what we're talking about. The chapters are concerning animals, buildings, building regulations, environment, fire prevention protection, health and sanitation, law enforcement, science, and other advertising, vegetation, and zoning. So, they're the major health and safety issues here in the city. So, thank you so much for addressing this.
Ms. McGlynn?
I have one change for the ordinance, the way it's drafted. On the first page of the ordinance where it has the subparaphrase D, if a person is convicted, pleads guilty, or no contest, or enters into a, it says differed disposition agreement. It should be deferred, I think. I think deferred should have been the word.
Correct.
Okay. And that's, other than, other than that, that's, I'm happy to have this on the books.
We don't have to change that as an amendment, do we, Mr. Brennan? Just because it's a typo. Thank you. Mr. Paul, did you have any comments about this?
You know how long I've been fighting this, and there's a couple of businesses in the city that we need to make sure that this encompasses them, and as far as I'm concerned, this is a first step. If this doesn't solve the problem, we need to find another step because it's, it's just gone on. We all know about the Lincoln that's set up and it's hind in and blew it for over a year, and, and we were hamstrung about being able to do anything with it. But anyway, I'm all for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Gregory, do you have any comments or questions regarding the item on table, please?
Those are Mr. Brennan. Mr. Brennan, do you have any idea or can you speculate as the, to the increase in the docket load this is going to produce?
I kind of hate to comment on that, Mr. Gregory. It, it would be a good idea for Mr. Ryan, too, because he's actually a prosecutor.
Mr. Ryan?
This actually is kind of the next step in, for lack of a better word, what our master plan was last year. We went to a court of record to start utilizing different abilities and powers, but we didn't want to kind of hit you all at once with a whole bunch of changes. So, this is kind of the next in line for that. The docket that you're, you're talking about, we looked at that to decide if it's going to like increase dramatically, but it's based on the number of code cases that we have and widening the net. It's not going to be that significant. We're probably looking at maybe, for docket appearance, a 10 or 15% increase per docket. But when you spread that out, I mean, some docket, some days it'll be a little higher, some days it'll be a little, little lower, but I'm thinking that's all that the docket increase will be. The problem is, I mean, most of the individuals out there, when they get their notice of violation, you know, 85% of them, they fix it. You know, they're very conscientious. They either didn't know that they were in violation or whatever, and they fix it. Some of them don't know what exactly it is they did wrong. Bringing them in and having the ability to explain things to them becomes very helpful. Sometimes they pay it at the window and then go about their business and don't even think about it, and end up committing the same violation. They didn't know why they committed the violation in the first place. And so, coming in for part of that education is extremely important as far as moving things along and getting those numbers reduced. As we talked last time, this sequence of changes that we're proposing is designed to help reduce kind of the backlog and the load that there is now on these code issues. So, I think I over answered your question, Mr. Gregory.
No, I have another question.
Yes, sir.
Does the defendant have the right to call for a jury trial?
Oh, absolutely. This is nothing more than a procedural change.
So, you're calling for probably a 15% increase in docket load. Are we, do we have enough jurors to constantly, I mean, are we going to have people coming in once or twice a year for jury duty if we have an increase in jury trials?
No, what we're talking about isn't an increase in the total docket load. The docket load will remain the same. It's the number that actually come into court before, you know, pleading guilty and kind of continuing with the violation. So, the, the load itself is, remains the same. The number of people that appear in front of the judge is what we're talking about. When I'm talking about the 10%.
So, how does this speed up anything?
How does it speed up anything?
How does this speed up anything?
Well, essentially what happens is if Louie goes out and gives a violation and it's not corrected and they issue a complaint, we wait till the next court system as it cycles through. We show up, the defendant doesn't. We wonder what, you know, why they didn't show up. It's that time we realized that they came to the window, paid, and then they kept doing their violation. So, we got to go back out and do the process again, and then they'll do it again. And so, it actually cycles through so that they escape detection or escape that education for a longer period of time. It could be a couple of months before we actually get a hold of them in there to either talk to them about not doing it, talk to them about what the consequences are, talk to them about why it's actually a violation. And so, when you bring them in earlier, you make them come in so that they can see what's required. Because, I mean, there is some misunderstanding. If you get a code violation, let's say you have a sculpture in your front yard that doesn't need to be there, or it's, it's protruding into the roadway, causing a, not danger, but it, it's onto the sidewalk area, if you have one, then they may not know it needs to be, you know, changed or altered. We have to explain that to them and what the consequences are, and like I said, a lot of the people, when they understand what's going on, they come into compliance voluntarily. Now, this is not designed to capture everything, as Mr. Paul said, you know, this isn't the end solution to anything, but we're looking at reducing the numbers as we're going forward to those that, so that we're spending any civil enforcement efforts really on the, the really hard or the really extreme cases. So, we're trying to kind of expand the net to capture as many of the criminal, on the criminal side as we can. Does that answer?
I still don't see how this is an improvement, but I'm just one person. I mean, I just, I just don't get it because if what you're trying to do is bring somebody and you broke the law, they pay, they go back, and if it's as broad as you're telling me, you can have, you can have some code violation in the wiring in your house and you have another in your hot water heater, that's a second violation of a similar code, and you're, you're coming on in. I can almost, that's going to be a revolving door of people who have those things. Is that, am I wrong?
No, what, what we're talking about, the violation is still there, and the notification of it is still there because Louie would actually provide it to you. What it does is it prevents people from kind of skirting the system or skirting the notice area or extending it out because sometimes we have to go through due process procedures whenever we provide notice, whenever we tell them they're in a violation. And so, if they come in and circumvent the ones we've already done by, you know, paying at the window, then we got to go through the whole thing again, and it can extend an enforcement matter of months if this isn't, you know, if this goes unchecked. You actually don't have a system here, and it would be counterproductive at the moment to try and integrate one where there is a constant monitoring of all these by staff and Louie and everybody else. You don't have the system set up for that. And so, what the system you do have is, is they come into court, and when they talk to me or they talk to the judge, they actually go, aspects are explained, and we get them in faster, and we don't actually let up. We let them know there are different violations per day. We let them know kind of what the consequences are instead of them thinking they can come in and just plead, pay it, and that's some sort of free pass to continue violating. And so, but when you make it so that it's a second violation, it can be flagged in the in-code system that way, and that actually will say they will not be allowed to accept a plea at the window. They have to enter it directly in front of the judge.
So, the second violation is an expeditious way to hurry up the process?
Yes, sir. That's exactly...
And to go in front of the judge directly. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Hang on just a sec. Oh, sure. Go ahead.
And, Mr. Henry, just to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly, the intent is to minimize the redundancy and have them come before the judge, so in theory, this will free up resources from Louie having to write repeat tickets for them having to come in here...
Yes, that's exactly right.
...to the front office.
I'd like to clarify...
So, the idea is it's going to help administratively, but also through the judicial process. Now, we're going to see how this works, but we talked about taking a next step eventually if this continues from that standpoint, which we can bring in front of y'all later down the road if necessary, now that we have a court of record.
Go ahead.
And it's for the same violation? Or a repeat of the exact same violation?
Yes, it's, it's basically the way it's, it's classified.
So, it's not like Mr. Gregory...
It's under the same chapter, but it's a same or similar violation of what we're talking about under the chapter.
Okay.
So, if you get a, you know, oper, you know, building without a permit, and you have to do a stop work order, and then you go, you get your permit, and then, you know, six months later, you're building without a permit again. All right? That second time, you got to come in front of the judge. You can't just pay at the window.
Perfect. Okay. So, they don't stack from one chapter to the other?
No, they do not. They do not jump from one chapter to the other.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify because he was indicating that that was the case, and I was pretty sure it wasn't.
No.
It's not. It's the same violation or the same, similar, very similar violation within that chapter.
Yeah, the same or similar violation under the, under the same chapter.
Thank you.
An example would be, we had one individual who got a nuisance with a structure, and we got that resolved, and then popped back up with a dog issue. So, those are completely separate chapters. This one wouldn't actually count, or wouldn't apply, but if we had another dog issue or another structure issue, it would.
Okay. I'd like to say something about this. I'm, I'm not up for election, so I guess I'm safe. What this does is, over the past years, we have realized that, that we have people, residents, business, individuals who just won't comply. We've sat up here, everybody out there who is running for election now and has listened to our residents, "Why don't you do this?" Or "Why don't you do that?" Or "This is a direct violation of what's going on and whatever." These people have learned how to work the system, and they do it very well. Mr. Ryan's enthusiasm of people abiding by the law, I, I really do appreciate that, although unfortunately they're, they don't. We're all, we're all sworn official officers of this city, and we should want to make sure that these repeat offenders understand that we're not going to put up with it. I got to be honest with you, two years to me, that's too long. I'd do it six months. I'd do it 90 days. So, that tells you how I feel about it, but it's, it seems to be the climate that we, that we give them a period of time. So, this would be someone who's operating a business out of their backyard, and I'm not going to call any names because I don't want to end up on Nextdoor again. These are, this is somebody who's running a business out of their backyard and has trailers parked in their backyard and have wood everywhere and have roofing equipment and have all this stuff. And we, we go out and he spends time trying to find them at 6:00 in the morning, leaving because he can't peek over the fence. So, he writes them a ticket. When he, when he comes out here, the guy says, "Oh, no, I got a ticket for $100." He comes in here and pays $100, and he's down the road until somebody else comes along and does it again, and he can pay. Being a business owner, man, he paid 10, 10 tickets like that over a year's period, and I'm still rolling. So, what this does is this put the brakes on it, and this is what we've been doing all along with this court of record where we can, through our prosecutor and our judge, finally say no. No to these people. Now, the poor guy that's out there that accidentally did something wrong, my bet is, if I talk to Mr. Ryan or, or somebody else, they would, they would be very lenient. I don't know, they'd probably dismiss it. I don't know. I'm not a judge. But they would, you know, if, if it's somebody like that, so if it's a repeat offender, we got them now, if indeed y'all move forward with this. Thank you. Douglas?
Mr. Ryan, let's use Mr. Howell's example. And the second time this person with all the stuff in the backyard is fined again, do we also have a form of forcing compliance? You can fine, it just seems to me, just keep finding the person. But what Tim was talking about, or the mayor was talking about, was compliance. How does this, if at all, help increase compliance?
Well, sir, this is, you've got several things on the agenda tonight. One is the ordinance, and the other are, are two matters that our compliance matters. They're set for executive session, so I can explain some of the intricacies of kind of where we are with them. But this is all part, as I said, kind of the, the master plan we had last year on moving forward with the court of record. We have been able to, as, as a court of record, we can move forward, and the judge is no longer bound to only find somebody. He has injunctive power at this point and can order compliance, and if compliance doesn't happen, he can order someone to go on and do it for him.
That answers my question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call the vote.
Okay. We have a, we have a motion. We have a second on the table. All in favor of moving this forward? It is unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Let's move on to the third item, which is consider and act upon ordinance number 2017-0430b amending the City of Castle Hills Code of Ordinances, number 2017-0822a, schedule of fees for various city permits, licenses, and services. Mr. Ryan, would you like to let us know what that's all about?
That's Mayor.
Ryan, city manager.
Yes.
Ryan, one.
Thank you, Mayor. This came out of a discussion of our staff meeting last week, and my understanding is that we're, we're starting to get some, as you'd say, some stagnant projects, fallow projects of, of work being done in, in the residential areas that, again, Louie is having to essentially go after for the work and the process. And so, our inspector had brought to the attention that other cities, Chavando Park and Hollywood Park, actually institute this fee to basically ensure that folks are keeping on track with their projects and that they're doing things within their timeframe of what they tell us from that standpoint. Now, we, we can certainly assist with weather delays and some other case-by-case natures, but again, it's really to talk about how we can go after from a, and or incentivize that they finish their project without adding this half-fee fine, moving forward on all of our ski, fee, fee schedule down the line. And that's kind of the reason why we wanted to bring this forward tonight for y'all to review and take action moving forward.
Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and get a motion on the table and a second on this item to move it forward into discussion, please.
So moved.
Okay. Second, please.
A second.
Thank you. Trevino and McGlynn. Okay. Let's start on this side. Mr. Trevino, did you have any questions or comments regarding the item on table, please?
No, I, I think it's a good idea. People care about money, and it's a, a good way to incentivize them to stay on top of it. I do have a question. The timeline is based off their anticipated timeline. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. Louie can elaborate, but I think they provide the actual timeframe. I know, like, for instance, there's somebody doing work, and they said, "Well, we needed two years" from that standpoint. So, I think if they can prove it up to say this is the why and reasons for needing this time period, then we can, but then it also gets back...
But then it also gets back to, if it becomes stagnant, that's when Louis gets involved in trying to track them down to complete the projects from that standpoint.
And I'm just trying to figure out what the standard is, because as a contractor myself, I know I would like to err on the side of caution and say, "It's going to take me nine months, give me a year." So what's to prevent somebody from getting a little carried away with that? I don't know if there's a standard that we can set in place, or, I don't know, I'm just asking.
I, I don't know, is that something we can do from a legal standpoint?
Can you restate that question?
Yes, sir. So what I'm saying is that if I'm going to go build a house, and I know it's going to take me nine months, I'm going to say a year. So what's to say that I don't say 15 months or two years? And I keep it something reasonable. I don't know if, if there's a way for us to set standards so that this doesn't get carried away with people adding time to cover themselves.
The way the ordinance is worded, the city is, is the decider of the time. We're not bound by what the person says when they come in. So I, I don't know exactly what standards or policies they're, the city's using to, to establish the time limits, but the, the city is, will determine the time limits based on some reasonable standard, rather than the applicant.
And if, if that's the case, I just would like for people to know what the standard is before they go into it. That way they, there's complete education.
Well, I don't know if we can publish it or have available standards, because every project's different, but, yeah.
At the very least, if they, when they tell you how long the anticipated timeline is, that we say, "Okay, that's fine," or we say, "You know what? That's actually a little longer than we might expect," just so it's a level playing field.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure there's discussion that goes on in the office as to, you know, how long it should be, and, and everybody has a chance to express their, their perspective. But you've got to leave it with the city to be the ultimate arbitrar of the time limit.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Scott?
I, I am very excited to see this going on here, because right things tend to drag on and on and on. My apologies, I'm not turning my mic. I'm very encouraged to see this come up for counsel with a background in design. Most of the time, if you're building something, you have a good architect, you have a good contractor, they're going to give you a good timeline on what to expect. And if you are not following those guidelines and you're running over, there should be, there should be a consequence for that. And I know there is built into ordinance, things like weather delays, that sort of thing that they can take into account, under Section 8. But looking at it, the, the wording seems a little, can I use the word legalese? To me, as a layperson working in design, I would read it and go, "Hmm, let me take a minute to digest this." But other than that, I'm, I'm definitely glad to see this going on, because buildings should not take forever to complete. You should have a, a good, solid timeline, and if it's going to go over, then go ahead and, and take those consequences.
Ms. McGlynn?
So I like the ordinance, except, Moretta and I discussed this earlier today, that the wording is confusing to me. And if it's confusing to me and another member of council, it probably will be even more confusing to anyone coming to get a permit. So I have a suggested change for the language of the ordinance to hopefully make it clearer. I would suggest that it be worded, "An extension of a building permit for which Section 8-83B of the Code of Ordinances is not applicable may be approved with payment of a fee equal to one-half of the cost of the original permit fee, which is tendered with the request for an extension. Any project requiring a building permit which was started without a permit shall require payment of a fee equal to double the amount of what the original permit for the project would have cost." I feel like it's confusing with using the word "payment" when we're talking about permit. And I get the "tendered with the request for an extension," meaning it's all done at the same time, but it's almost like dangling at the end of the sentence. And so I just would suggest adding "which is" before it, so that it kind of ties it all together. But other than that, I'm happy to have this. Hopefully, it will inspire people to build quicker or do their projects quicker. And I did find on the Muni code, our Section 8-51 expiration subsection A does allow the permit expiration date to be something that our office works with the contractor on, depending on what the project is. So we do have code that tells us how the expiration is considered, and it, and it's just a case-by-case basis at this point.
Thank you, Ms. McGlynn. Mr. Paul, did you have any questions or comments regarding?
Yeah, just real short, I know of two instances for sure in the city. I'm sure there are more. But one, in, in an area in the estates, they've been remodeling it for five years. They go for a while, they stop. They go for a while, we give them permits, and, and we've worked overly helping them. And the circumstances allowed that to happen. But the house is being completed now. The point is, is that if we had this, it would allow more flexibility for our city. And again, it's all about getting rid of, if you will, the deadbeats that want to ride us. And, and every neighborhood, every city has some, and I'm all for this.
Mr. Gregory, do you have any comments regarding the item on the table, please? Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Scott.
I have a comment. As I was looking through the building permit fees attached to this ordinance, one was misprinted incorrectly, and that was on the painted house numbers on residential curbs, that'd be page four. That was changed on August 2nd from $10 to $1, August 2nd of last year, meaning. So I just want to make sure that the other fees are double-checked. That one jumped out at me, because that was the one that, that I pressed forward on, on getting those street sign, street numbers on houses. So if we could just double-check that, because I don't, I don't, it's, it's correct on the second set of fees, but it's, it's wrong on the first set of fees.
I see that, we'll, we'll check it out.
Typo.
Typo.
Well, as usual, I don't think it went far enough. But I thank everyone, and who brought this forward?
Well, we, we had a staff meeting just last Monday between, what I call our leadership team, and this issue came up. Again, Louis is, is challenged with some cases he's working right now. But we felt more that, again, this could be an incentive to get the projects done and not necessarily, say, a penalty from that standpoint. To hope that it helps get projects done, helps Louis on the administrative side and get some of these residential projects that are in the community moving.
Well, I appreciate that. I, you know, a, a lot of people don't realize what happens in a mayor's position. They're the one that gets all the calls. And they're the ones that say, "Why is this guy abusing us?" Nine out of 10 times, it's the same guy. If it's a regular person, they're in a, a resident in this city, that if they're running late, or their contractor's running late, and they come to City Hall, it's going to get slapped in the face. It isn't going to happen. I can assure you that. But it's the person over and over and over again who abuses our system. So thank you, whoever brought it forward. And so, we got a...
And Mayor, most importantly, again, it's not like this is something arbitrarily we decided to do. It's happening in smaller communities, especially where Richard, our inspector, is working as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you again. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second on the table. There wasn't any amendment needed on yours, is that correct? Or yours for the typo?
No, just to fix the typo. And I believe I said August 2nd, but it's really August 22nd was when that was changed.
Make sure that many gets a hold of that. Okay, so all in favor? It is unanimous, thank you, counsel. We're going to move on to the next item, which is consider and act upon ordinance number 2018-04-30B, amending the City of Castle Hill's ordinance number 2017-0822A, schedule of fees for various city permits, licenses, and services. Did we just do that?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Well, that shows how much I pay attention. Okay. The next item on the, I just liked it so much, I thought we'd go back and re-look at it. How's that? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the executive session. The City of Castle Hill's council will convene into executive closed session as authorized by the Texas Government Code as listed below, to consult with the city's attorney pursuant to Sections 551-071, 1A and B, and 2, regarding pending litigation, specifically the City of Castle Hill versus Laura Moser, cause number C20171201, and the City of Castle Hill versus Lincoln Town Car, license plate number TXGKTO917 Martha Remy, and Christopher Daniel Remy, cause number C20180201. Closed session is authorized due to the pending litigation, potential further litigation, and because the duty of the city's attorneys to the city of council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Open Meetings Act. Also on this agenda is item 2, which is Section 551.072, to deliberate the possible purchase and value of real property. So with that said, it is now 6...